Good morning. Today is Wednesday, June the 24th, 2020. This is a regular meeting of Commissioners' Court, Grimes County, Texas. The meeting is being held at the courthouse annex at 114 West Buffington Avenue in Anderson, Texas. This meeting has been called to order. We will now, I would ask that you rise for the invocation, place the allegiance of the U.S. and the Texas flags. Shall we pray? Father, we come to you and thank you for this day. We, dear God, we thank you for the blessings of this life. We ask, Father, that you keep our county safe from this pandemic, be with the leadership in our state and our nation, that they make right decisions, give guidance where to need it. Father, we would pray for wisdom as we work through this issue, give us peace in our community and our county. Father, we're grateful for all that we have. Let us be mindful of you and the decisions that we make, and forgive us when we fall short. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? Commissioner Walker is not able to join us this morning, so let the record show that we still have a quorum. Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item number two, ask for public comments. Do we have any submissions for public? All right. Commissioners, any public comments from you? Hearing none. We will then go to consent agenda items, number three, number four. Well, number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Four, consider and take action to approve payroll. Five, approve monthly report submitted by the county treasurer for May 2020 and authorize advertisement of affidavit of saying in accordance with local government code 114.026. And you can see that on page five of this agenda. Six is consider and take action to approve budget amendments and or line item transfers. And I believe that would cover all of our consent agenda items. So Commissioners, I'll give you, I know we've had time to review this, but I'll give you another minute to look over, just to make sure. I'll look to approve consent agenda items three, four, five, and six as presented. There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number three, four, five, and six by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will now go to agenda item number seven, Grimes County Building Maintenance Manager, Al Peeler. Good morning, Mr. Peeler. If you would, give us an update on ongoing projects, the Grimes County courthouse, the Grimes County jail, and the Grimes County Justice Center.
Okay. Grimes County courthouse. Grimes County courthouse is rolling right along. We were waiting till July 6th to get finished up the exterior. We have no, have no problems finishing up yet on that. Any other questions on that?
No, sir. Are we at the point, we're going to be talking about the interior, or we're going to wait till we finish the exterior?
We're going to wait till exterior is done.
All right.
I'm sorry, Al, when did you say that exterior, July the 6th?
July the 6th.
Does that mean the scaffolding will all be down, or will that remain up until the punch list is done?
July 6th, we'll do our punch list. From 6th to the 10th, we're going to do final punch list of stuff that, they're doing final punch lists now for the contract, for the engineers. Final punch list will be for me the week of the 6th through the 10th.
Okay.
And that's when the scaffolding will start coming out.
Very good.
Grimes County jail, we're still on hold lockdown, so...
Any idea when the sheriff is going to release that, or he has not commented?
It's not the sheriff, it's jail standards.
Okay.
That are, that are keeping it locked down because of incoming people trying not to mix with people that's already in there.
Okay.
So when they loosen up the strings a little bit, then we can get in there and get rolling again.
Thank you. Grimes County Justice Center. Just a little token from the maintenance department for the Commissioners and the judge. That's your first, can you get this to Commissioner Walker, Commissioner Dobbs?
That's your first, that's your first truck of your first pour of the first side of the slab.
Okay.
And what I thought, just in my little simple mind, that the people that helped get it this far should deserve the, the first drops off the truck getting the slab poured. So I just took it, and I thought, man, it's just, if nothing else, it's a great paperweight. If not, throw it in the garbage.
I'm glad you got us a small sample instead of a gallon jar.
It's just something that's the historian coming out at me. You know I have one, so it's just something that you guys can say, hey, I did it. So the, the update is, man, as soon as we can catch a break in weather, we'll have our slab in. We did do the test pours for the maintenance building, maintenance and storage. We did them in pouring down rain the other day. Besides that, we're just in a, we're in a weather pattern. We need three days. We need three days to get the carton forms and get all the rebar tied, then we can go back to pouring. Until we get a weather pattern, we're kind of stuck.
So is all work shut down then at the facility, or is there?
Yeah, most, because I think we're putting in some last minute boxes, underground boxes for the security systems. For the most part, there isn't nothing that's really going on.
When, just a question on my thought, when would they start excavating the roadways, the entrances to the facility as something that they're going to do towards the end, or?
Now, they'll, right now priorities on the slab.
Right.
They'll start combining work as soon as the slab's done, because there's, to give you a drop dead data, when the one roadway, the second roadway hasn't even been drawn up, or any samples, or any of that, none of that has been started. So as soon as you can get me some, or as soon as you guys tell me it's a go, then we're going to send them in and say, okay, start drawing it up. I believe that's what we're doing, right, Commissioner?
Yeah, once the paperwork's done, then we can, they can go somewhere and do the design.
Right. Then they can, they'll, they'll fit that in.
Okay. So I guess when you got your ironworkers in putting up the sides and what have you, they can be done, fire can be done.
Yeah, they'll have multiple, once we can get this, that's the most important part right now is the slab, because of the carton forms. Carton forms don't like water, because they're cardboard.
Right.
So as soon as we can get that slab poured, that's going to open up a lot of things on the slab that the other subs can be doing, and then Collier can start doing some more civil dirt work and stuff like that.
Anything else?
Sufficient, Commissioners?
Sounds good.
I'll finish that up Thursday. I know it looks a little...
Nice, thanks. Thanks for the memento. All right. Agenda item number eight, Grimes County Assistant Auditor Mary Johnson, discuss and take action to approve the application for coronavirus relief fund grant, CRF, and authorize the county judge as signatory seer attachment number eight. She asked if she, asked me if she needed to be here to explain it. I said no. Mary Johnson, Mary Nichols is here in the event. But this is the CARES Act that has been granted to municipalities and counties throughout the state of Texas. It was federal money that was passed down to the states. The states then made decisions on how they were going to disperse the monies. And we've already received our initial check, which was over $200,000. But if we don't spend it in the right way, in the right order, then we are required to give those monies back. The, the other issue is that we have been told that our total amount is about a million eighty-two thousand dollars, something like that. So we have a little over a million that we can spend to help us fight and recover from the coronavirus pandemic. The allocation was that they figured, Grimes County had a population of about 28,800 folks, and allocated $55 per person, and that, when you totaled all that up, it came over a million It's a, it's a nice benefit for us to have, so a lot of the expenses that we've earned, I'll say, some of the expenses that we've incurred due to the coronavirus will absolutely and for sure be reimbursed. As I said, we already have a check for over 200,000 that's already been put into the bank. We've dedicated, or Mary Nichols has dedicated one of her auditors, Mary Johnson, to be the overseer of expenditures. We're trying to make sure that all payroll monies that have been dedicated to coronavirus are captured, all expenditures dedicated to coronavirus have been captured, even to the point of the extension of the Commissioners' Court bench to give us separation qualifies for reimbursement from the funds that we've received. It is, there is a, of course, I guess with all government money, there are certain strings attached, and I don't necessarily agree with the strings that the state has imposed upon us, because I understand secondhand, I haven't confirmed this, but I understand through the liable source, that when the money was given to the states from the federal government, the expending restrictions were not there. Our state government are the ones that impose the restrictions, where we have a 25% regulation, or a 25% bridge that we have to meet, and a 75% bridge that we have to meet based on different categories of spending. So the restrictions do make it difficult to utilize the full million dollars to the extent I believe is important for the health and safety of Grimes County, but we'll see what happens. A letter has been sent to the governor expressing my concerns in regards to the strings that have been attached to this CARES Act money. So if there are any questions, I'll let Mary Nichols answer those for you.
We'll call Mary Johnson in here. She's read it frontwards and backwards, and is very well versed on it.
And I will say, Commissioners, a meeting that you were not invited to, because I didn't want to put an agenda out, we held it last Thursday in the second floor in the district court, and it was talking to department heads or any elected officials other than yourselves, although I did ask that one of you Commissioners attend the meeting, and Commissioner Walker kind of said first that she'd like to attend. She did attend that meeting, and it was just mainly to get the department heads aware once again, and elected officials once again, of the importance of keeping track of every diamond dollar that's spent towards the COVID-19. So again, some of the things that we wouldn't normally think of, that, oh, that's just the normal course and scope of doing business, no, it's not, because we've had to modify so much of our business activity on day to day. It's caused us to purchase some additional laptop computers, so that when the county was effectively shut down, and if it's to be shut down again in the future, we have availability of those computers. Now, we've been very mindful that those are tax dollars wherever they come from, and IT has bought refurbished computers, and they've also taken some of our old computers and updated them with new hard drives. So even though that money's there, we're being very sensitive to how we spend it. But we've had to make some additions of equipment and supplies within the county, so that we meet the requirements. Our district judges, Judge McKeig, our administrative judge, has a judge over him who's administrative, and the OAC required them to put together a plan of what they were going to do in holding courts, and how courts would be held, and when courts would be held. And the result of that, we had to spend a fair amount of money on sanitizing stations, and sanitizers, and masks, and gloves, and a number of things that we, we normally have around the county, but not to the degree that we have them now. So those costs are being captured, and by golly, we should be reimbursed for those expenses. So again, with that, I'll silence myself, and if you have any questions or concerns, I'd certainly be glad to hear them at this time.
Judge, I have a couple of questions. I receive, I guess it was subsequent to the meeting that you conducted, received an email with reference to projects and getting quotes, but don't approve any, anything with any contractors. My question is, who will be approving, I don't even know what projects are being considered, so who approves those particular projects? Is it us, or the auditor's office? I mean, I...
Well, my recommendation to those that have asked me about projects, if there's a contract attached to the project, then I've asked for that contract to, one, be submitted to our county attorney, Mr. Foltz, and, two, after his review, not his approval, but after his review, then that contract be submitted to, or presented before Commissioners' Court for us to answer any questions we may have. An example of that is Chief Green wanted to get a cleaning service to clean the administrative areas of the jail facility. Because of the restrictions that the jail standards has put on us, we can now no longer use inmates to clean those areas unless they have constant supervision watching them then in the areas. Commissioner Dobianski, correct me if you hear me say something incorrect here, but where we've been able to have inmates, what are the good guy inmates called?
Trustees.
Trustees are able to clean these particular areas, and now, because of jail standards, the trustees are not able to. So Commissioner Cox, Chief Green, sent me an email saying he wanted to hire a cleaning crew, an outside cleaning crew, to do that, and my response to him was, if a contract is involved, then submit it to our county attorney, Mr. Foltz, and then present it to Commissioners' Court. Now, that, that expense, because of the extraordinary things that we're having to do, because we can't use trustees to do the cleaning that they had in the past, this and is, this is a definite adjustment that we're having to make, and under my understanding, and MJ, Mary Johnson's understanding, that would be qualified for reimbursement under the CARES Act. So that's one example that I can speak immediately to. Where we had a, it wasn't a contract, but Al Peeler called Abraham Construction and asked them to extend our bench here, and he did not do that with a contract, because it was under the 50,000, we knew or felt like it needed to be done. And again, it's good back to have you all at our level.
We appreciate that.
Yes, and he's not quite finished, so we are going to get it quiet, the base covered with carpeting, and I guess they're going to get some type of surfacing, so it'll be slick. But long answer to a simple question, if it's, if it's a big project and we're not sure about it, then we are going to have, and a contract is presented, we're going to have it reviewed by the county attorney and approved by Commissioners' Court. The other non-big items, like the additional sanitizer stands, I mean, those are like $160 apiece. They didn't give those away, and I think we ordered 10 to 12 or 14 of them, so that's 1,600 to 2,000. Al Peeler made that decision on his own, did not present to court, because we knew that would be reimbursed through the CARES Act. Does that answer your question, sort of?
Yeah, well, what, if there's multiple department heads and elected officials doing multiple transactions that aren't necessarily going through any, any check or balance, they're just saying they're COVID-related, how do we prevent from spending more than, than what we've been given? And how do we make sure that those are actually COVID expenses? And how do we do that in an equitable fashion?
Well, what we've asked MJ, again, Mary Johnson, to do is to be the point person for all of these expenses, and we have, in our meeting this last week, we did instruct those, convey your concerns or your projects to MJ to make sure that it is covered by the CARES Act, because if it's not, then certainly that expense, or that project needs to be brought before Commissioners' Court for approval, because at the end of the day, if we're not going to get a reimbursement, if it's not budgeted, then it's going to come out of the general fund, and we're not, we're not in, we're not in a position to grant a lot of those, Commissioner. Do you have a, do you have an additional concern, or do you have an input on what might work better, or safer?
Well, I mean, we approve all other expenditures. I don't see any reason why this would be different.
Okay.
No, we don't want everybody to go out and hire a cleaning service to clean their office. The law enforcement center is a totally different animal than the rest of the county. And so, you know, and our buildings are being cleaned and stuff, so we wouldn't want people just to go out and do it. That's why all contracts are supposed to be approved in Commissioners' Court. And I think pretty well all the department heads know that they need to talk to Mary Johnson about an expense before they just go out and blow some money, because she'll tell them whether or not it can be approved.
And I guess, Commissioner, part of what I'm hearing you say is, all expenses are approved by Commissioners' Court, yes, to the, to the degree that we approve budgets, and then if it's within a department head or elected official's budget, they don't necessarily come back before us for approval and spend that money, they go ahead and spend it. And I guess essentially, what I'm thinking is that the money that we have is, and I guess that's why we have this, discuss and take action to approve the application for the coronavirus relief fund grant, CRF, and authorize the county judge, this is kind of us approving, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but these budget monies are the monies that the state has budgeted to us, so that we don't have to have approval for 1,600 in sanitizers. And I know that when we put the splash guards or sneeze guards up in the county clerk's office and the district clerk's office, we didn't bring that before. We, we just knew that had to be done, and those were going to be reimbursed. So if there's a preference at the court, then we need to make a decision on how we want to do that.
Well, we, can we get a report on expenditures out of this particular fund?
Absolutely, absolutely. And not only expend, well, not only direct expenditures, but what I'll call indirect expenditures. And what I mean by that is David Lilly, as you all, as we all know, he's our emergency management services coordinator. He has dedicated not 100% of his time, but I'm going to suggest 80-plus percent of his time, so we've asked him to keep track of his hours. And those hours that he has spent, we're applying for reimbursement, because he's had to dedicate his time to that area. And according to MJ, who's auditing this, she says we're within our rights to do that, and we should be refunded that portion of his salary.
And I think there's, there's also a number of examples that we could use, and one of them that comes to my mind in the Road and Bridge Department, where we've had our employees take their personal vehicles to job sites. Should not we be able to pay for their mileage through that? That would be a question that I have.
I believe so.
Because they had to go out in their own personal vehicles, because we didn't want them congregating at the barn to have their meetings and stuff, to, to go out to work.
Because we have modified our normal course and scope of how we do business as a result of COVID.
Yes.
And if we've done that, and Mr. Walker, Road and Bridge engineer, said, instead of putting four people in a pickup truck, you know, we're going to have one driver take the pickup truck to the drop site, and then the other individuals will take their own personal vehicle to the job site. So those reimbursements, if submitted, would indeed be refunded to those individuals.
And that's, you know, that's a good example, but just what I, what concerns me is they haven't been submitted yet, and we have no idea what that figure is, and we still are spending on COVID projects, which I'm not opposed to, but I mean, if we've got a big lot of money that needs to come out of that particular grant because of mileage, then, and we've already committed to so, so many projects, how do we monitor that?
MJ, I believe, has a spreadsheet and updates it every day pretty much, so we're keeping a...
But what if you get, what if you get a submission of mileage that's, I mean, they're driving to and from in their personal vehicles every day, that's a pretty good chunk of change, I would suspect, for the last two months, every day.
Well, but also, I look at it in a little bit of a different light. We all drive our vehicle to our workplace. Their workplace, they change places throughout the time. But, you know, they're going to drive it somewhere, so why should we pay the mileage from home to their workplace? I could see from the barn to where they're going to work.
Well, and that's all that's acceptable, or we're accepting.
Yeah.
That's all that we're accepting, is from the barn to the job site, not from their home.
So they have to drive to the barn, and then they're dispatched to the work site?
Not necessarily. If, they know the day before where they're going to work, I believe, that's the way Patrick operates. He gives the assignments the previous day.
Deputy Cook, would you walk down to the auditors and have MJ come, please?
I don't think it'd be any additional mileage if it's, any longer than a barn, than a trip to the barn.
And what they'd have to do is take the mileage from the barn, wherever they're
going to work, not drive to the barn, because that'd be a kind of...
Right, but they, all, everybody goes to the barn to report for work, and gets in their personal vehicle, and drives from the barn to wherever their worksite is, or reimbursing from the barn to the worksite.
Yeah, but they don't necessarily drive to the barn every morning. If they're, if they're working in Anderson, and they live between Anderson and the barn, they're going to come here and go to work, but they will, they will draw mileage from the barn to wherever they're going to work at, if that makes sense. they're going to work at, if that makes sense.
But whatever additional mileage, if they had to travel, that they would have just to the barn, they could get that.
Yeah. MJ, would you come to the podium, please, because I'm doing a terrible job of answering the questions.
I doubt that.
Would you, not in every little detail, but in general, would you share with the Commissioners how you're keeping track of the expenses that we are incurring, and your idea of upcoming expenses, how we're monitoring those even before the monies are spent, if that's a fair request of you?
Sure. So, good morning. Right now, how it's working is if a department has a need, whether it be PPE, disinfectants, anything that they need to mitigate the spread of COVID, or respond to an immediate need of COVID, they can purchase what they need, they mark, when the invoice comes in, they mark it as a COVID-19 expense. All those expenses, when the check is getting written, are coded to one account, and then we have an Excel spreadsheet that we are also keeping a track of. So, periodically, I'll go in and look and make sure what's on the journal ledger is on that worksheet. And then we're taking the master worksheet and seeing where is the best fit for its reimbursement. Right now, there are at least three different grants available. So, we're kind of looking at it as a big picture. If this big expense comes in, does it fit on this grant, or this grant, or this grant? So that we make sure when it's all said and done, we're getting the maximum reimbursement. So that's how we're tracking now. Do you want me to go into more on this, Ciaran?
Well, one of the, I guess, well, one of the questions is, how do people know that it's going to be covered by one or two, any of the three grants, before they even spend it? Are we getting, the concern might be, because we had a meeting last Thursday talking to the department heads, but the question is, if they get out and start ordering stuff, or buying stuff, or spending money thinking they're going to get the grant, the concern might be, okay, they're making a decision to spend that money, and Commissioner's Court has not been a part of that approval process.
So...
Is that fair, Commissioner?
That's one question that I have.
So, if you're talking big things, smaller purchases, okay, that's covered. If you want to start getting into, it would be my recommendation if we took the CRF funds and really developed a budget for it. That's why we had the meeting last week, to get people to start thinking about eligible projects. I think we need to come back together, like you said, in two weeks, bring all the ideas together, see what best fits the needs of the community, what we can expend, and truly develop a project and approve, develop a budget and approve the projects. I think that's the best way to look at that particular grant and fund.
And we did not give the department heads or the elected officials a dollar amount of saying, if you plan a project, anything over $2,000, you know, need to bounce it by us.
No.
We did not do that, but as you stated, we did ask them to put together their ideas, and also review what they've already spent money on to make sure, one, that we don't forget about it, and two, that it is justifiable.
Correct. So, as of last week's check, right, I think we had approximately $40,000 that we had identified as COVID-related expenditures. People were originally coding most of those, they were using their operating budget, but now we can take those, now that we have grant funds available, we've identified the grants, we've applied for the grant, we can take those and reclassify those expenses out of their operating budget over to the grant budget. So that's about where we are, and that's, the $40,000 is, not including salaries. So, the big piece of the CRF, we think we can get some salaries reimbursed, which is great. We need, if y'all are kind of getting familiar with the CRF, there's six different categories of spending. Where we really need to be focusing right now is on categories one, two, and three. Those are, the grant is highly restricted in that it's a 75-25 split. And what I mean by that is, when it's all said and done, the governor wants to make sure that the total amount of money we spend, at least 75% of it, is spent on categories one, two, and three. And then you may also spend additional 25% on category four, five, and six. So, one, two, and three, they're directly related to the COVID incident. It's medical expenditures, public health expenditures, and I can't believe I forgot the...
Payroll.
Payroll, thank you. So that's where we will get a big portion of David Lilly's salary, that's a category three. So, as we were talking about in the meeting last week, we really need to be focusing on spending categories one, two, and three. And so, the way the program works is, they have advanced us $200,000 of the, approximately, $200,000 and change of the approximately $100 million dollar and change.
$1 million.
$1 million and change. They have already advanced that to us, so that can be used like as our working capital. As we develop our projects, and we spend that $200,000, we submit everything for review, and then they, and then we keep spending, and we can start applying for additional reimbursements.
So, what is the limit that an elected official or department head can go out and spend without having, I mean, can they, without having to check with anyone?
No, that nobody should be, well, they're, right now, they're coding it to their operating budget, and then we're taking that and then reclassifying. So, there's no real restriction on it right now for the little stuff, and everybody has been very frugal. They have not been buying, you know, five years' worth of PPE. They've been getting enough just to get by. We, there's no limit on that, but yet we also said you can't spend it yet. We want to develop projects and figure out how we should best spend this money.
From what I understand, Commissioner Cox, I think what you're looking for is your checks and balances, that's where it's at, right there, because if they're spending out of their budget, then it's going to have to be coded to be able to be put into the grant money. So there's your checks and balances on what's being expended right now. But eventually, with the larger projects, as the judge mentioned, and she mentioned, when we come back together and meet again in a week or so with the projects, then we'll...
You're short on the time. I started it a month, she's down to two weeks. No, you said a week or so, but we'll figure out when we're going to get back together.
Yeah. People are gathering ideas. I've had, since last Thursday's meeting, I've already had three different elected officials or managers ask for clarification, throwing ideas out. I've already sent an email to TIDAM to ask for clarification on maybe an allowable expenditure. So, we're doing our best to make sure that if we spend it, we will get reimbursed. If anything looks like it's in a gray area, I'm sending an email to TIDAM to ask for guidance, and, you know, we've got a paper trail on that.
Can you, will you take a moment and share? One of the projects that we've talked about is the new voting equipment, and how, in our minds, that's going to work? Because it's not something we have budgeted this year.
Right.
However, we were talking about having it budgeted next year possibly, because we wanted to take advantage of a couple of HAVA grants that have come around, they're getting ready to expire and only come around every five to 10 years. So could you share kind of our game plan on that and what should work?
So, for the voter, for the new election equipment, as we all know, you know, voting is one of our, facilitating the voting is one of our primary functions as a governmental entity, right?
Correct.
So, how can we do this to, in the COVID-19 environment? And one of the ideas was to be able to facilitate some sort of a drive-through voting process. It's my understanding, the equipment we have right now is beyond archaic, and needs, could not facilitate that kind of a process. So, we need to get something that is a little more mobile, something that's not, you know, 50 pounds or whatever, it's pretty bulky. So, the idea was, could we use these funds? And so, we reached out to TIDAM and asked for guidance on that, and they said, it is an allowable expenditure, however, it's going to fall in that category four, five, and six. So, remember, we have to keep the 75-25 split in mind. So, in order for us to be able to use those funds in a category four, five, and six, we better make sure that we had spent in categories one, two, and three. So, it's our goal to, first of all, serve the community. And we are identifying some really good projects in categories one, two, and three. I think it's a little premature to talk about them today, I think it needs to go in some sort of a workshop and get vetted. But that's the thing, right now, we're spending this time trying to develop ideas.
So, when does the money get put back into the department's budget?
It's never going to get put back into, we never put money into the department. What we do is we reclassify expenses. So, right now, money that has been spent up to date, we have now received that money. So, in the next week or two, we will transfer those expenses out of their department and put them over into Fund 80.
And that essentially puts money back into their budget.
Right. It's like they never spent it. We'll move the expense...
We'll turn it from their budget, their expense that they spent in their budget, over to the grant.
And how quick does that happen? Because if they're buying, if they're buying COVID-related things out of their budget...
Well, they shouldn't be, now they won't be paying for it out of their budget, because when we set up the fund for that, then Heather knows that anything that comes in marked COVID, instead of building it to the department, it goes ahead and is coded to the grant. And so, we just have to go back through and look at all the ones that have gone through prior to, and do the adjusting journal entries.
So, how long does that process take? I mean, if I'm budgeting my budget, and I've bought some COVID-related things by the direction of this expenditure, this grant, and I needed that money for other things in my department, I'm held up on the budget that was approved initially by the Commissioner's Court to buy stuff that we already have money over here? So how soon does that transaction take place?
It's going to take a little while, because when you're talking about all the different departments that the county has, we're going to have to scrutinize and look at all of these invoices, or all the transactions. And so, it's not going to be something that I can say is going to be done by the end of next week.
But we can shoot for it.
Yes.
We can draw up what we're doing and make that happen. If people are that low on their budget, absolutely.
And that's another thing. If somebody's low, all they have to do is call and say, look, I had all these expenses early on, could you look at them and see about getting them taken care of, so I have some money to...
Right, and we have, nobody has called us yet, so I don't know any department that has spent down that far yet, but I know it's, we're getting near the end of the year, and everyone needs to be looking at that. So, we know we need to do it, again.
Will the court as a whole be involved in the planning process going forward, or is that just going to be a committee-type situation?
I don't have a problem with the court as a whole being a part of the process, but since Commissioner Walker made the first meeting, I'm anxious for one of the three of y'all to make the second meeting, so that everybody can see how the process is going. And if it's a desire of the court that you want to be invited to every meeting, then we'll make it so, we'll put an agenda together and try to bring folks together. One of the things that I was also trying to be cognizant of, Commissioner, is limiting the size of that meeting, whereas I knew that with department heads and elected officials excluding three of you, we could hold it in the second-floor district courtroom, and I had room over there, and that's where we held it. I could not hold it here in this room because of social distancing and size requirements. You know, if I got the three, the four Commissioners in here with myself to hear what people are doing, you know, we're not going to have others, not that many others in here. And the reason I wanted to have department heads together versus Commissioners is one department head maybe has an idea that sparks another department head, oh, I can use that same idea. Just my thought process.
And I am available. Shoot me an email, call me on the phone. If y'all have specifics you want to know about the grant, I am happy to, you know, inform you, send you more material to read. I know y'all get a lot to read, but I'm learning as this goes. Everybody's learning on, this is a very different kind of grant. You know, my background is more FEMA hurricanes and floods, but this is a very different kind of grant. It's even, it's different from TIDAM. And so, everyone is kind of learning as we go, that's why I think it's just prudent to, if in doubt, shoot, you know, shoot it to TIDAM, let's run it up the flagpole, get some guidance on it. I feel more comfortable doing that. But again, one of the big things is, there is a time restriction on this one, and it's very short. Monies have to be expended by December 30th. So, if we're going to do some, you know, what I call kind of very in-large projects, kind of, that take time, we need to get rolling. If anything's got to go up for bid, you know, that's a process. So, we need to kind of pick up the pace on this one.
Is there a preference from the court that we do this in a, because I have nothing to hide on this. I'm just trying to be expeditious in getting the process started, because I think I told Cherie on Tuesday or Monday, I said, hey, I want to get a meeting together with department heads and elected officials, other than the Commissioners, and if one of them wants to come, that's fine, but limited to one, because I wanted to be a part of it. So, I think that was a Monday or a Tuesday, to make sure the courtroom was good, and we were able to throw it together, we didn't have to do the 72-hour notice.
If you want to start doing public workshops, or however y'all see best, just...
Dare I ask our county attorney, do you have an opinion? I mean, I know transparency is a good thing, and I'm not opposed, sir.
I have no opinion.
That's fine.
I think this short meeting was just to get the word out, and so that we can start thinking, y'all can start developing the projects. I do think the best way to approach this is, you know, everybody, develop your projects, let's sit down and see what fits the budget, see what categories everything is falling into. As I said in the meeting, it's real easy to come up with projects that we can do in categories four, five, and six, but if you don't spend in one, two, and three, you don't get four, five, and six.
That's a big issue.
That is a big issue.
I think committees would be more efficient time spent, and easier to get together and have the meetings together versus having to advertise for each one and plan that ahead. I think you could stretch it out a little too far, but, you know, I think once the committee meets and has those type of projects and what the scope are, then it can come to the Commissioner's Court.
Sure.
Kind of a briefing and an approval, if we need an approval.
Surely we do that. Anything else?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I move that we take action to approve the application of the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
If there are no further questions, I move that we take action to approve the application of the Coronavirus Relief Fund Grant to see our FIP and authorize a county judge's signatory.
Say it. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Eight by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing non-along in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Grimes County Elections Administrator Lucy Abada, Agenda Item Number Nine. Oh, she was right there. Update, update the grant award status for 2020 HAVA CARES Act 2018 and 2020 election security grants. I just kind of mentioned you earlier, but go ahead.
Stole my thunder, Judge.
No, I haven't.
Good morning, y'all. So, we don't really have much. In fact, we considered tabling this, but I went ahead and came in so we could just kind of give you a small update. We completed our election security assessment last week. It went well. We found a couple of issues that we knew were coming when it comes to our server strength, firewall, things like that, and then the way our current election equipment is acting currently. Because we know with the age, there were some security issues as well. It does not affect our grants, so we know that we are getting the election security grants, which is also tied in with HAVA. Right now, they will not provide us a full update until July 20th is our next, will be our final update. We guys will actually have the full printout of what we're looking at and the issues that they found and recommendations. By that time, we should know exactly when we're getting the grant and exactly how much we're going to be getting of that $120,000, if not all of it, which is good. So, at this point, what they told us is that they don't anticipate not giving us the full $120,000 grant. So, we, there's two grants that we're looking at. Originally, when I came to you guys, if you remember, there were three grants. They combined the two election security grants, which are still $120,000. And when I talked to them last Thursday to do a final breakout, they said they don't anticipate any issues, that we should get the whole grant with no problems, and then they'll give us our full breakout within about a month.
Using not exact numbers, but for us to replace our equipment with new equipment was going to cost us about $375,000?
About $400,000.
About $400,000.
I've jokingly said that.
So, if we were able to receive that $120,000 from the HAVA grants, then we'd be down to needing about $260,000?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we have another 25, well, the 120 is from election security grants, not necessarily HAVA. We have a $25,000 grant from HAVA that we're also going to be using.
Okay, so we could go down to 260 to 235? So, $235,000 is what we would still need to come up with?
Yes, sir.
And part of what we're striving for with this CARES refund...
Yes.
That there's a possibility that they could cover that $235,000, providing we get the expenditures in one, two, and three, right, Mary Nichols?
Yes.
Yes, there's no, based on our reading and understanding of the grant and the questions that I posed, there's no way for us to put anything into sections one, two, and three. We're primarily number four, number six of the grant. It's not the only way we can do it.
But if we can do one, two, three through the other legitimate expenses, then we can then have available some of that four, five, and six, four and six money that would then cover this.
Yes, sir. That is great.
So, Commissioner Cox, that's kind of, if you want to talk about a big project, that's a big project. And if we, you know, the question we're going to have still before us is if we put our budget together for elections administration, if we get the 120, that's one thing, and if we get the 25, that's another thing, but we're still on the hook for about $235,000. That's the decision that we would have to make because that would come out of our funds.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we talked about the fin, if we can do it one time, we can do it a three-year, a five-year, a seven-year?
We can, yeah. So, we're still on the same plan for that. The biggest thing that's going to make a difference is how much grant money we can actually pull out from all three of the grants to figure out, you know, how much we don't have to finance. That's going to be our biggest thing.
Right.
We're also working on the potential for us to qualify for additional discounts with our vendor. He's going to check in with me next week to see if we can discount some of the other materials that were included in that cost to make it us a little bit cheaper. Not much, but we're still working with them on that. And that's why, you know, we practice vendor loyalty as much as we can.
Well, they ought to have customer loyalty, too.
They should. I tell them. I tell them a lot.
They're kind of one of the only ones, not the only one in town, but close to the only ones in town.
Yes, yes. So, not much to update you guys on right now. We're just kind of in a little bit of a holding cell. With everything that's happening and a lot of our vendors and the grant deciders with the state working from home, it's a little bit more delayed, so we will have definite answers after July 20th. And then I know that we had mentioned the possibility of getting back on track with census. We do have some things in the works for that.
That's not on the agenda.
I know, I squeezed it in.
Oh.
We do have some things in the works for that, so within a couple of weeks, we'll have some definite updates for you guys on that as well.
Go with Cherie and get on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
We'll discuss that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Oh, did you want a number 10 election security assessment? You already copied that or covered that?
Yes, yes, we're good.
So, nine and 10 are complete. Thank you. Number 11, Emergency Management Services. David Lilly, review and approve the firefighting services contract with Plannersville Volunteer Fire Department authorized county judge's signatory. See attachment number 11. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Doctors, you're going to stand in for Harry?
Yes, sir.
So, if you didn't hear, review and approve the firefighting services contract with Plannersville Volunteer Fire Department and authorized county judge's signatory, our attachment number 11.
Yes, sir. I might also add that both the fire chief, Chief Briggs, and the Plannersville Fire Department president are here. If you have any questions for them, they are standing by, and I'll switch places with them so they can come to the podium.
Okay.
Basically, Judge and I met with Chief Briggs and the Plannersville Fire Department president and worked through details on the contract for the Plannersville Fire Department. There were a number of changes, not really significant changes, except maybe to the tier level page that they requested, and we made those changes on this copy that you have. Particularly, I would point out, some of the changes on the tier was to make it more logical, I would say, as far as the, for the fire chief and/or senior officer must have. Chief Briggs pointed out that for the original version, it had for tier one, they must have one and 200, NIMs 100 and 200, and Phase Two, they must, or I'm sorry, NIMs 100 for tier one and NIMs 200 for tier two. He explained that NIMs 3 and 400, those other ones are through requisites for 3 and 400, and he said there's no need to list those under the first two tiers, so we removed those.
And just actually playing up the language for us?
Yes, sir. And also clarification on my role. Let's find out where that reference is. Under 4.05(c), under VFD obligations, it now states, it clarifies my role, I will validate all capabilities listed on the tier page that reflect individuals' training and certification. It used to say I would approve, and there's really no need for me to be in that position to approve, and I'm not, I do not have a firefighting background, so it, you know, I'm not in a position to actually formally approve their certifications. I do verify and validate them. So, John, you also had a couple of issues, minor ones, I believe, that you had pointed out, I got a letter or an email from Cory about.
Whatever I sent you today, I don't have it in front of me.
One was concerning the date, and I believe on here, as you can see, the date for this is effective 1 October 2019. Again, this is for this year's contract for Plannersville, so that is the correct date that would be put in effect. They have continued to do calls throughout this fiscal year, so this contract would support what they have done up to date. And again, that's contingent on what level, tier level they finally are determined to be at, and that's how well they drive the level of the tier payments that they would receive. I've already started, I've had at least one meeting with Chief Briggs already, and we have started that review process already in anticipation of the contract.
David, there's been no contract in place for Plannersville, and so have they been getting paid?
No. Not been getting paid.
Now, are they going to be paid, since it's effective back to October, for any costs or anything that they would have submitted or they'll now submit that are backdated to or that are effective starting back October, they're going to be paid for? That's the expectation?
It would be for the invoice for their, the tier level. There's no reimbursement for costs anymore. It's just simply based on what are the tier level they're determined to be at.
But we're paying that on a quarterly basis so that if they move up, then they can get more money.
Right.
So, since they didn't qualify apparently for the first three quarters, they're just looking to get the last quarter?
Well...
No. They've been providing services, Mary, from that point in time. Now, if we can validate, if David can validate that they're a tier one, we're going to pay them at that tier one level. If he can validate that they're a tier two, we're going to pay them at that tier two level.
Will he have to validate when they became the next tier because that may affect the dollars, right?
Absolutely.
Well, it would, but I understand what you're saying. If in the first quarter, the second quarter, they were only tier one, then they'd be paid at the $30,000 rate. If they had certifications that came through in Q3 that take them, took them to the next level or in a higher level, then that quarter, they'd be paid at that rate. But that's something that David has to tell us once he validates.
Yes. And that's also contingent on completing the evaluation. Once we do that, I will report to the Commissioners' Court on that.
When do you think that validation is going to be complete?
Chief, when do you figure we can probably finish on that as far as doing your tier evaluation? Are you ready? Okay. So, probably by the next Commissioners' Court. Now, I will not be here for the next Commissioners' Court, though. I will be out of town on the 9th of July.
Well, the next Commissioners' Court is what? The second or third?
First, yeah, first, yeah.
Oh, it is?
It's the first?
It's a lot first.
Okay. I'm thinking second and fourth, let's say.
Well, we'll do one, two, and four.
Okay, that's right.
So, if you do it fairly quickly and we get it on the agenda, or we can get it on the agenda subject to you having your review done. Are you, is your schedule going to allow that?
I'll make sure it doesn't.
Chief, your schedule allow you meet with Lilly between now and next Agenda, uh, next Commissioners' Court? Sir?
Depends on what happens in the gym, but it will get done.
Okay. So, Cherie, go ahead and put it on the next agenda, please, and then we'll know at what level.
So, while we have, I'm sorry, wait. Just so I understand, you're going to validate all the way back to the inception of these contracts? Of their qualifications to be paid from October to now, the rest of the year?
Well, no. Well, up to this year, I mean, the next, the final quarter hasn't started yet. So, if there's, let's say, we find that they're a tier one or tier two, but, you know, Chief says, "No, I think we can make tier three or even four," but we haven't completed that by the end of this quarter, which is really next week, then, then, you know, we're only going to pay at whatever level the fire department is actually determined to be at.
Were they a tier one in October?
I have not finished determining that.
So, that's what we're waiting on?
Right.
Yes, sir.
I got you.
All right. Judge, I was just going to ask while we have Mr. Lilly, the changes that are being made to the attachment, is there an expectation that these will be made across the board for all contracts?
Yes, sir. This is the starting version that we have now. I've already sent this version out to all the other fire departments. I've not received any back yet, but this is the starting one. Every, the way we work this is every new version, whichever is the most current one, that's what we start with with a subsequent fire department. And if they have changes they would like to make to it, then we make those changes, assuming they're approved by the Commissioners' Court, and then, you know, that becomes the next version after that.
I understand, but you all recognize this is something that could get you in trouble is this department wants X and this department wants Y. If you take them at different times, then you've got multiple different contracts for every department.
Right.
I don't have any concern about the modifications that were made to the tier level. I'm just saying, it seems to me if it's a clarification that's been made, it makes sense, we need to make that for everybody else, or we need to make a change across the board for everybody.
And John, that's my intent for this round of contracts for the 2021 budget, is that they would all be the same. Because this year's contract was pretty much a work in process. We got a benchmark, and we'll work from there because I think without fail, every department made an addition or a change or clarification for simplicity, and it made sense. So, but this year, they ought to be all pretty much the, this year, they ought to be the same.
Sounds good. So, if you can't verify the tier one level for the first two quarters, are we still reimbursing for the first two quarters?
Well, Judge, the approach we've had with the other departments is if they're making a good faith effort...
Right.
Then I can mark, I've marked on their invoices in progress, but with the understanding that if they haven't completed that for that particular tier level for the following quarter, then they get paid at the lower, the quarter that, or the tier level that they're already qualified for. So, to kind of answer your question, it's at the discretion of the court how we approach this, but my recommendation is that we do the same as we've done for the other departments. They are making a good faith effort to provide me with the documentation, so I think it's only fair that, you know, we, you know, I anticipate that we will complete at least tier one and not higher in time to be able to go ahead and process the first three-quarter payments with no problem. But, you know, again, in light of how we've done this with the other fire departments, I would request that we be able to go ahead, even if for some reason, just say there's one or two items that are missing, but everything else across the board looks good or whatever, but they are, again, making a good faith effort, that I should be able to mark in progress for that department like I have for the others. Again, I'm not making any exceptions to them, and I'm not making the standard any softer. I'm trying to recognize the efforts that they're putting in to comply with the requirements of the contract. Again, I don't think that's going to be an issue, though, because we, I've already got a very typical meeting with the, first meeting with the chief, and got a lot of the squares filled for the tier report pertaining to what level they are. I don't remember for sure. Chief, where will we have on that? I'm pretty certain they will meet at least tier one for sure, and they possibly could reach all the way to tier four. It depends on, again, I have to see actual documentation and/or something to prove that the training was actually conducted, and so far, I've been receiving a lot of valid information that pertains to the items on the tier on the sheet, so.
If there are no further questions, I move that we approve the firefighting services contract with Plannersville Volunteer Fire Department and authorize the county judge 's signatory.
Say it. Is that with the understanding that the tier level is still to be determined?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion before the court on the Agenda Item Number 11 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion? Hearing non-along in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, Agenda Item Number 12, Road and Bridge Engineer Harry Walker is on vacation, so you're his stand-in for today?
Yes, sir.
Considering, take action to release road maintenance bond for King Oaks Section 4 gated private roads, our attachment number 12.
Yes, sir. Bob Leaper, who is the HOA president or treasurer? He and I met last week out at King Oaks Section 4, and we rode the roads together in that section, inside the gated section. And the roads looked great. I did not see any issues at all. There were so few spots where there was some very minor cracking, but very, very few, a lot less than what I would have expected even with all the buildings that's been going on out there. So, I feel confident that those roads are ready to be basically closed in effect. These are not roads being accepted by the county. They are private roads, but we still had a maintenance bond on those roads. So, what he's requesting is on the cap of the HOA is to have the maintenance bond for Section 4 be released. Harry Walker does concur with me on this, but we feel confident that the roads are ready to be released and the bond returned back to the HOA.
How about Commissioner Mallett? That's in your precinct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, everything is fine with us.
Can I get you to step back, Mr. Lily? Bob, you want to step in? Just so the Commissioners can see your face and know who you are.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Uh, the purpose of this is to reduce expenditures for the POA. The bond serves no purpose since it will not be conveyed over to the, to the county. We still have bonds on the public roads that have not yet been conveyed to you for maintenance.
Right.
When they came up for renewal this year, we realized there's no reason for us to maintain a bond on the private roads.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I move to release road maintenance bond for King Oaks, Section 4. The gated, gated portion.
Thank you.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Agenda item number 13, consider approval of a plat of the Dartmouth Estates subdivision consisting of 10 lots located on CR 110, see attachment 13.
I placed a.
Is there any chance you can make these smaller? Smaller, smaller?
Uh, that's, yeah.
I'm good.
That's the, when they print the, the Mylar copy, they just print paper ones on the same printer, I think. Often, this weather, weather's so large, but.
I use my magnifying glass in my office, seriously.
Uh, basically, Harry has been overseeing this particular plat process. And I believe he has actually visited the site. I have not, but he said that this, he does not have any problems with this plat going forward and being recommended for approval.
And they all have access to CR 110?
Yes, sir. They're all at least one acre, see, they call them are exactly one acre. Yes, sir. And I believe that this location has access to public water. So that, that's one of the criterias for having one acre for residential development. If it's only one acre, that they must have public water.
I did not know what precinct this was in.
This is my, my precinct.
Okay. It's just a landowner putting some lots out there?
Yeah, I didn't realize this plat was coming out driven by there pretty recently. Didn't notice anything.
I move to approve the plat for Dartmouth Estates subdivision.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 13 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? All in favors, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. That motion carries. Agenda item number 14, consider and take action on variance request from Sarah Nash regarding the waiver requiring paved roads on her property located in the John H. Quully survey, attachment number 14.
Uh, and Judge and Commissioners, I would like to point out that Ms. Nash is here today. If you have any questions for the property owner herself, she is available to answer any questions I may not be able to answer for this review.
Guess there's no map or anything?
I did meet with Ms. Nash. She came and saw me, provided me with this information. Get it, Judge?
Yes, sir.
The measure? I can take her card.
On that map, first portion is outlined in blue. The access is the bright yellow line that comes off of Deer Run, which is a county road, but goes through a two-acre piece of property also owned by Ms. Nash.
Mrs. Nash, just for clarification for the Commissioners' Court, your intent is actually to create a road of sorts, but it would be a gravel road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not just an easement. You're actually looking to establish an actual road in your.
Well, we feel that we have to provide an access driveway type thing to the, each of the areas that we sell.
I will inform the court, I have spoken with the Roden Bridge Engineer as well as the county attorney regarding this matter, and I reviewed it myself. And unfortunately today, I, personally, I'm not in a position to make a motion for a waiver.
Okay. Do you want to further why that would be?
Sure, Judge, if you notice, there is no access to the parcels that abut a county road.
Mm-hmm.
It's 194 acres, which she is allowed to sell that as a, as a entire piece. If she subdivides it, our regulations require, based on the situation of the lots and the access point that she planted and show access to the parcels. It's, it's very similar to some of the other situations we have in the county that I think the subdivision regulations were designed to prevent.
And is that a power line right away through the center of that?
It's a gas, gas line.
Gas line. Commissioner, this is in your precinct?
Yes, sir.
Where would you put a road? Where would you put a access road where it would accommodate the other lots?
Are you asking me?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, I might should have asked my realtor to join me today because I'm not an engineer. But what, what his plan is to do is not, this is not a subdivision. I'm just selling land because I need money badly. We would come in through that little yellow line, which would not be for sale at any time. And then, um, we have talked, the Realtors have talked to people who are interested in purchasing 30-acre plots, which you can see have already been sadly surveyed for the years because of family divisions.
And is that where you have reserved for, by name, their?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
And, um, so a road would have to be, uh, it would be an amplified timber road that would just give the people access, which by law, I think we have to do, give them access to each one of their properties. And then after that, they are on their own. I mean, it's, we are selling the land, but, but we're not any community out there. We just, I mean, that land has been in my family since the 1850s. And I would like to be able to sell it. And we just have tried and tried to sell it at 194 acres. And people just aren't interested. But as soon as the realtor advertised smaller, well, there was interest.
There was interest in it, okay.
I would very much appreciate your consideration of my request for a variance because I really need the money, again.
Okay, can't the timber company come in without the variance?
A timber, yeah, we've had a timber. It, it is a tree farm managed by Star Forestry. I have hired them as my tree farm manager out of the, that I have a high school.
And are you harvesting some of those trees at this time?
No, this is not a good time because raw lumber, raw tree, it's not paying as well as if you go to the lumberyard to buy two of those to build your house, unfortunately. And we had thought maybe that would be an added incentive to people to purchase this land. However, no one, no big company wants to purchase the whole amount of land because this, the price is down. And the people who want to buy the smaller, 30 and so forth acres, they want to go out in the middle of that, not cut down any trees and build their house and be surrounded by the wilderness. Maybe we all would. And I might also mention that on the other, on the back end of my property is that development. I don't know if it has a name, but the road that goes down there is Whipper, Whipper Will, I believe. Dire Mill Road turns into that. And we have tried very hard to find someone owning lots there that would be willing to sell us access into the backside. But as of this time, no one has shown any interest.
You've done your research, Commissioner, and you're not in, in a position to, or you're, you're not prepared to make a motion to accept this variance, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this could potentially lead to problems with, you know, people not having access to their property because of bad real conditions like we have in some other areas. And it's a private, be a private road and.
Well, I will tell you, the terrain is nothing like the terrain in the northern part of the county. This is sandy soil.
Well, there's a lot of sand up there, it's a problem. But it gets, when it rains, there's no rock or no structure. And everyone gets stuck up there, unfortunately.
Ms. Nash, I'm going to call for a motion. And if I don't get a motion, then my suggestion to you would be go back to your realtor. And because by your own admission, you're not a Roden Bridge engineer, but maybe they have some ideas and some suggestions of what could potentially be done to satisfy your need. And then the court's open and we could run back, run back at it again. So with that, on agenda item number 14, consider and take action on a variance request from Sarah Nash regarding the waiver requiring paved roads on her property located on the John H. Quully survey. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? And is there a motion? Hearing no motion, there will be no action taken on this request.
Okay, thank you very much for your consideration. We will go back to the calling board and try to present something more reasonable to you.
You bet. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go to Grimes County Road and Bridge Report. And just so you know, Harry's been kind of brief on it.
Yeah, he's been briefer.
Okay.
Sam, actually, I met with him briefly yesterday. He asked if I, he was going to be here to do this in Harry's spin, but he's out of town. So he asked if I could, and I said, that's fine.
Okay.
So I'm not going to read word for word what's on the road report.
Please don't.
Spoken by a true expert.
County attorney wanted to be brief.
Just a couple of items that I would like to point out, kind of highlight. There's, uh, some of the work that's being done is, again, as a result of some of the storm damage we have recently, but we've had no declarations. We didn't reach that level. So like you see where dugout road failures on Amelia Drive and filled with limestone, ditch work, installing culverts on 101, 173 and 207. Some of these are in response to previous issues that we have with locations. Others are more recent as a result of expensive rains, especially on the north side of the county.
Any questions for Mr. Lily?
I have one comment. We do have a deck port on County Road 202 on the bridge, the new bridge being put up there.
Yeah, it says it's poured here, is it finished now?
It's not finished, but they have the deck port. They've got to put the side rails and all on.
People riding through it?
In an emergency situation, it could be crossed.
Uh, possibly.
Not recommended, but it could be.
I remember 302, when we had that one replaced, people were riding over before it was finished, after the deck was laid. And we finally had to put piles of material in either side.
Thank you, Mr. Lily.
Thank you, sir.
You have a great day.
I will stick around afterwards so I can get the file signed.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number 15, under County Judge Joe Fount, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. I was prepared earlier, based on the field conditions, to propose a burn, burn ban. But over the last 48 hours, we've had a pretty good wedding throughout the county.
We will continue to.
Okay, so, and we'll, looking at the weather pattern, not good for pouring foundations, but it is good for preventing fires. So we'll take a look at it on our next agenda. So I would have proposed no action. Agenda item number 16, any updates on the, on the strategic plan? And Commissioners, I know that we've got a lot going on with budget, with new buildings and things of that sort, the pandemic. But we do need to, all of us, review the strategic plan, see what movements we have or non-movements, and see what we can do to move that along. We have an obligation there. Hearing done, is there, on agenda item number 17, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, Commissioners, I remind you, we need to get a signature on the treasurer's report. With that, there's a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion carries, we are adjourned.